I'd like to do that, and I hope you do these meetings periodically, maybe once or twice a year. You know, I think it's good even without a specific topic, but just to give an overview of the community to come out. Thank you to everybody who's on Zoom. Yeah. So just to get started, I would like to introduce my team. Laura, do you want to say a few words? Okay. So this is Laura Bygo.
Nice to meet everybody. So my name is Mark Anfield. I'm with the Councilwoman in Councilwoman's Office. Before I worked for us in the office, I was a volunteer and outreach coordinator for Just Artists, which is an anti-harbor organization that has all the volunteers at it. And before that, I worked with little campaigns and I worked, I went to school for journalism. So I'm really excited to just be in the office to my work. Again, if you call the office and not wire to them directly, the odds are you'll be talking to me. So it'll be my voice doing this.
Much more so when you open your mouth, but when you take your way out there.
Yeah. Hello. Good night.
And hello, my name is Brooke Christie. I am working for our client in Councilwoman's Office. I'm also a full-time Austin. Before Lostwood, I did a lot of community organizing work, also some policy work. So I'm really excited to be able to utilize both my legal knowledge and our community organizing experience to help out. Since I do work for Christ, I focus mostly on legislative issues, so there's any needs on that, I can have a shout out. Thank you.
And I also, she's not able to be here today, but Abby Lour is also in our office and they they are working on a lot of data and getting our systems in order, which has been extremely helpful. So that we can basically keep track of everything that we're doing and also document all of these processes and best practices. So that down the road, hopefully years from now, when someone new comes in, it's a easy transition. Rather than sort of coming in and having to start from stone. That's, that's super helpful and Abby. I also would like to give a shout out to our community engagement, public engagement team. With the Rock there, Dr. Austin. Okay, I don't know, people, so they both work within the council lot. So they serve all the council members and helps set up meetings like that. Communities under Republicans, for a little handing out flyers and whatnot for this meeting. So very much appreciate their time and have extra support.
Get Melissa to talk about the cards this morning?
Oh, yeah. Wanna?
Yeah. I'm Dr. Melissa Rosberg. I am Public Engagement Director, listed all of City Council. So wonderful Councilwoman has us for this evening. But I have comment cards and what I like to do is that in their life, you share with me your ideas, your concerns, anything that you would propose. And what I do is I log them and I am a senior member to the Councilwoman and her staff. And usually when we do this in the house, I do contract people directly. But that's how we handle the handling and handing it over to them. But if you would, if you're interested, I'll hand you these cards. And yeah, if you put your hand up, I'll bring the cards to you. Okay?
Hello, everybody. I'm Dr. Diane Thompson and I too, I'm a part of the Public Engagement Team, working on all of our city council. Members and more stuff, and I develop cases that we're doing in our communities. My specialty is education, the coordinator of that, that Public Engagement. And I mostly work with the smaller nonprofits or organizations who are looking to find their ways with funding and those kinds of things. That we help you in ability or capacity, we help you in making sure that you are moving your projects from event status to goal and objective, that we meet the criteria for the funding that you might be going for, whether it's governmental or private, we walk with you through that process. And certainly be happy to work with anyone if our Councilwoman's helping. These people need some assistance, I'll be happy to.
Okay, so I guess we just want to open up to talk a little bit. So we've been in office for just over a month now. So I just wanted to talk about what we've been up to. Well, right out of the gate, which was a lot of fun, we were able to distribute about $45,000 to community earth grants, which, you know, is makes, makes, makes folks feel very good. We gave grants to the PCOs at Greenfield School, Co-Back, Fullback, Nadeo, also Greenfield Baseball, Hazelwood Cobra's and a few other organizations. So that was nice to be able to, that was some leftover money from 2022. It didn't get out the door very, very quickly before the folks closed. And so we were able to do that, that was exciting. We also started the process of distributing about $50,000 in community development grants to a couple of organizations in Hazelwood. Yeah, we've answered nearly 150 issuing calls, which, well, that's one thing that's very important. It is, I want you to feel our door is open. I want everyone in this district to feel that they can get in touch. You know, if you have my card, that's a cell phone number that comes right to your. So whether it comes from calling the office, calling your cell phone, we really do our very, very best to get active within, you know, 24, 48 hours. And then of course, you know, follow up, whatever the issue is, if it needs a follow up and to make sure that we are, we are doing that as time to matter, keeping you posted on whatever, whatever ones need follow up. I think for Squirrel Hill's town, there's a few topics that we want to talk about as we go through updates before, before we dive in. The first one, I'm sure everyone has heard quite a bit about it. We have is the Ford's Dallas Beachwood Beacon Intersections, the changes there. So just to give a little bit of background. For years, there has been requests from the, from the community, from the surrounding neighbors to make that intersection safer for pedestrians and for bicyclists, especially for kids walking too many from school. As it stands right now, while, while we're crossing the street at that, at that intersection, it is really too dangerous to do so. It's not, it's not a good place to cross the street. So in order to safely cross, you know, kids especially, you know, and walk out 700 feet up to of Beachwood and Forest, we have to pour away. So that project has been coming for a long time. And with the rebuilding of the bridge, seems like a good time to, to fix that intersection as well. But what happened was that the bridge was, was built so good. It was great, but it was done so quickly that, that there wasn't time to do the full rebuild on that intersection. So what we have now, what, what Domi decided to do was to at least get the traffic. So that, so the drivers would get used to the new pattern rather than going back to the old pattern and switching it. So, so it's a little, a little funky right now as we wait until spring for the, the rest. So that crosswalk, if you want to engage with experts, I didn't want to do detail, but there are going to be crosswalks, pedestrian islands, some separated bike lanes, et cetera, around there. Hopefully making that intersection much safer for pedestrians and bicyclists. And then once that's all in place, hope that that change in the traffic, folks will be used to it already. The, the drivers are used to it already. I do know that there, there are certainly folks who are used to commuting through there that find the, the new, the new pattern a little frustrating, which I'm sympathetic. I understand, you know, it's hard, you use a few extra minutes and, you know, yeah, to leave earlier, I like this stuff. But, but just keeping in mind that the idea, especially, you know, whenever you change the traffic patterns, it's like the cars are still there, so you're just kind of pushing the pain somewhere else, right? So it is what was an intersection that bicyclists and pedestrians felt completely unsafe. You know, essentially could not use safely. It's, it's, it's been shared, but that there's half as many cars though, half of the cars are going the alternate routes, you know, up to, up to ours, to Beachwood. And yeah, so we're hoping with time, everyone can get used to it and it will become the new normal. But of course, please, we do still want to always keep hearing your feedback and certainly if there's safety issues, let us know. I know Steve Albert has been instrumental. That was actually a first plan that was not satisfactory. And I really want to commend Steve, he did a great job. He got the neighbors to sign a petition, we're about 600 people. You know, really that kind of community involvement is outstanding. And the result, that, that was been enabled us to say, look, you know, this, this first plan that you could gather really doesn't work. So, you know, we, we need to make some changes in those changes already and now we'll, you know, we'll move on. And like I said, please keep letting me know of those, it's important to be here for the community on, on these topics. So I don't think that he had any questions about that intersection. I did want to address that with my friend because I know that this man will.
Hi, Barbara. Tony, in the event of, for the B's one. You, you have responded to my concerns. In a posting on Nextdoor, very responsive significance. So I guess my question is this, a lot of people who responded and said, how some of the people participated in some of the areas, which they most helped that occurred here. That response going far enough, there's been fall, city, perhaps advertising fall off. So I guess my comment is, the career disagreement will call a very common good thing. Will there be, because of, I think a large number of people are still concerned about the design that seemed to be permanent plan. During iteration from about a year, it would be better that.
Thanks, Tony. At this time, I, I think the answer is no. I think Domi is pretty set on, on this plan. I can bring it up, but I do know that they've had two grounds of, of public comment. I know Steve, you would like to also have another conversation. I can talk with them, but I do know that they, that they're, they are fairly set in what they're hoping to do. So I don't want to make a promise, but I can give, but I, I would certainly ask them. And I'm glad actually that you brought up Nextdoor. Because so I, I, I do social media. I, I'm on Facebook, like many, many of you. So I am very much, I really am trying to, you know, it's hard, but obviously you can only get the posts that you get, right? You only see the posts that they come across. So I, but I, I do try my eye on the community pages. Nextdoor is a little trickier because it's neighborhood by neighborhoods. So of course, I mean, you can get some of the surrounding areas, but you don't get all. So when I, when I look at my Nextdoor during a rebuild, I think that I put my address in the rebuild. But, but that said, I do appreciate if there is something, you know, if there's a conversation happening on social media, I do appreciate when people let me know because that, that helps me go and look, find it and, and, you know, respond when it's appropriate. But just to kind of know, that was actually very helpful during the last snowfall. I was able to go in some of the groups, in particular in the 31st ward, and kind of see where folks were saying, oh, we should have a cut. You know, so I made those calls and made sure that they got the, got this is what needed it. So yeah, so whatever, I launched what our home is wrong there, Facebook is really where I need my best work. Not social media, but at any rate, that is, that is a way to contact me. So if anybody ever just wants to send me a private message or, or let me know that there's a conversation or bag me and something, I almost always will, you know, appreciate that. Any other questions or concerns on each one?
I would say, one, everyone.
Yeah.
So the Domi is that on pushing forward with the plan that's in place with the changes that have already been made. But I think we have to also recognize that what we see today, what they were able to do in December is only a portion of what they're planning to do, whether you love the planner, you're giving a planner, you're somewhere in a bill. And what I would say is they're very, my experience, they're very data driven. And they are listening, they are looking for comments. So they took the comments that they received on the two iterations of the design that they did. And that informed the plan that was put into place. They advertised those comments, they looked for common themes. So what I would say to all of you and anybody that's on Zoom as well is that as we use the intersection, we can all relate to Domi's experiences, in particular, anything related to safety. They are very motivated by, by, you know, the aspects of the plan that affect safety for cyclists or pedestrians for cars. And, you know, they, the other part of their process will be a traffic study in the spring. So if you think of the, the things that are in place right now, it's all in preparation for this traffic study to be done in the spring. And then they're going to use that data to inform any other things that may need to be done. Pro, sorry, on, that can make things even better. So if there are smaller enhancements or things that we think can enhance safety before they do that traffic study, I think we ought to convey those things through our, to Domi. I think you can use 311 for this. Or there was, they were collecting feedback through neighbor at Pittsburgh PA dot com. So, you know, any of those avenues are, are good to use. I've already conveyed that whole observation that I've had. And, you know, something as simple as whether you'd like Dallas be one way or not, you know, there weren't United Enter signs at the portion where it's closed. And it was made on today, I didn't see.
Yeah, so, yeah. But again, these are the type of things, right, because we can't be in all places at all times. So we knew the United Enter signs were coming. They weren't there yet, Steve sent me a text, you know, that they weren't there, I sent an email there and Domi's following us. So this is the type of communication that helps us get the things done that we do. Yeah, so, um, also in terms of traffic coming, I did let folks know that Shady Avenue. So there's, there is a site on a Domi site, Max, that shows the stages of various large scale traffic coming, where, you know, what's being evaluated, what's not going to happen, what is, you know, on the docket to be done. And Shady Avenue, at Phillips, there's that very, sort of that weird note, but light is funny. And yeah, that, that is on, that is on the schedule for traffic coming. I can give more information later about, I can do that, that's just like. I don't know, so that, I just know that it's on the schedule to be, to be done, right? To, to have traffic coming for that, that.
Will there be need for that then?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make sure that there's, that there's some, I'll make sure that.
That's the thing major for in there. If they're thinking seriously of bringing more traffic on some of that, they shouldn't do it.
Well, we, I have to say, I can say from feedback about, I've gotten multiple emails. So that I believe that there's been at least one fatality in that section where the cars coming downhill and running stoplights. So, and, and also cars being hit, parked cars being hit.
What are they, police there to watch it and ticket people?
Yeah.
That is a problem for those traffic cops. That is not an appropriate place to work for traffic cops at the major thoroughfare.
Yeah, but at the same time, you know, we do have lots of people walking. I mean, okay, I will say, I can do some kind of traffic calming. I, I don't want to talk about, well, I have knocked on many doors, I was saying that. So I've knocked on nearly 2,000 doors over the past year and personally. And the number one thing across the board, every neighborhood, from Squirrel Hill all the way out to Lakeview Place, the number one issue is these cars are driving too fast on our street and it's, and it's an area that's not there. So we do not have a burden of power in the Pittsburgh, we're forced at the moment to be doing traffic stops all over the city. And traffic calming is shown to reduce speed by, by 30% or more. So, so that is, I, I, I'm proud of the calming. Obviously it needs to, you know, public engagement. And I do understand as well, it's frustrating, right? If something sort of appears on the street and you're, you didn't know it was coming or whatnot. So it didn't actually come to your point earlier. When it comes to meetings like this, public meetings, at my office, you know, our office is going to do everything we can to make sure that everybody knows about whether it's traffic calming or playground or whatever it may be, that all these various meetings that are happening through the various departments, you know, when it, when it affects our district or even just rural revenue in particular. I really encourage everyone to sign up for our newsletter, for our monthly newsletter, because we are also going to use that information to, as best we can, give you information. You know, whether it's about a project or a public meeting or it's, you know, PWA says it's going to be tearing up every three or four weeks. It's going to be noisy, you know, we, we want to be able to give you that information, but it's important. But, but we actually don't have, it's surprising how little info there is about the actual condition. So without you guys signing up and giving us your, your emails and whatnot, you know, that, that's really the best way for us to, for us to get in touch. Yeah. I mean, I don't have anyone to talk with.
I'm just thinking about traffic calming. And it seems to me, having this meeting up near my house, that the only place that that affects people is right at that point. And nobody else in the city is affected by that. So if you put in all these weird folders and diagonals and zigzagged and very confusing traffic calming methods in one place, it's not going to do any good anywhere else. So what about bringing things like driver's training back to school, which they thought? How about educating kids? How about educating bicycles to obey the laws as well? Especially the state law about where signaling is coming up, that's almost in rundown. Fixing the sidewalks, which is much more of a nightmare than if you bicycling. I just see that we should approach this globally as a city rather than this, I did, I did. One more thing, sorry. Air pollution, we're concerned about air pollution in this city, but this Dallas port thing is a good example of how cars have to go all the way to the hill, all the way down, all the way to side streets just to get to Dallas. How much gas is, and also the speed home, how much gas is used by cars after the brakes and then accelerating? And multiply that on Beachwood by how many buses, garbage cans, I'm sorry, garbage vehicles, utility vehicles. All of this air pollution is happening and it's going to happen more and more. Anyway, how I feel.
Thanks, Con. So well, that's, that's funny because that segue up the house, I do want to talk about cars to traffic calming and, and Squirrel Hill in particular. As I said, I have a request for traffic calming from every neighborhood. And as I'm sure everyone here is aware, there's lots of traffic, there are lots of traffic calming in this Squirrel Hill area. Lots, back there's 20 speed, speed on, I mentioned about 20 speed on 15217. There are zero speed, zero, zero traffic calming at all in 1527. So that means Ring Hill, Hazelwood, Lincoln Place, these neighborhoods have no traffic calming at all. I mean, desperately, desperately needed. So I think maybe that is, hope that what you're feeling is like, well, you know, if you're not a fan, then it sort of feels like it all here. But, and that's something that other folks have noticed too. And so when it comes to the witness for district, for the whole district for five, for the next year or two, I do want to be upfront with Squirrel Hill that priority for the office is going to be when working with Domi to, to make sure that they'll bring that up, that's traffic calming that they want. And here's what happens. And even Niflin Road, you know, there's five, there's five of them already as well. So I just wanted to, so that everyone knows, like, these are traffic commies. I think Domi's, we got 700 requests last year citywide, so you know, there's only so much traffic.
I just think what you can go for, and I don't feel the mind, and I think what you're saying, people don't want. And for a lot of people driving cars, we consider it present day, especially as special people who are not restored. Part of the problem, with all of this, that has really created a problem. And they hear those people, the people that are driving cars and who really want to get something. They just feel that it's a bit dangerous and who I know, they don't want. So if you want to take them out as well, don't, everybody in the neighborhood is responsible. I mean, we should do it.
Well, I do know that we want to rebuild that, only one. Well, not anyone else. Yeah, but I didn't. We have somebody on the series who looked at a relevant comment. So Lauren Wainker says, over the past years, speed home to the van is tall on Imperial Street. They come and claim for the new container without admitting of, or, or putting traffic on the resident's streets. How is he making sure that the public has a going to need provision? And the judge said that that goes without the already passed this, I've been at your side. Yeah, it's kind of a fifty pound, you know, who's used to improve what is most standard. Instead, the city buys the speed home pursuits with a few people left terminally. He's been upgrading the cables, that's going to be definitely, and then that's like, could be far more. We all look at that and prioritize people over other people. Yeah, thank you. That's, that's a very question. Oh, well, let, let me answer that question. So yeah, that's absolutely right because you need to, you know, a lot of intersections are very much like a Dallas intersection. They're small, tight, very strange. So, you know, these are, these are all areas where Domi needs to make improvements. Over time, we want to hear about those sections if you have one, right? Or we hear about it, that's, that's information that I can go back to. It's the same, look, you know, intersection, that's, I know in Greenfield, a big one is the Long Street, Greenfield have right by the, right by the EBI Center. At any rate, the, another intersection at the top of Brown Silver Road, where it's been out in Brown Silver Road, Beachwood. That's another very difficult intersection. So these are, those two in particular are on the, are on Domi's radar. But I think in terms of budget, it's, those, those are, and I will talk about budget in a moment. But as far as the traffic calming, the simpler measures, those are easier fixes that can be put in more quickly and more widely to slow the cars down. And then that's when you're finding like a classic quality. Um, and then that's when you're finding like a classic quality, you can just paint his line right now on the street. The narrowness of the street slows, it's a visual, right? It just automatically slows drivers along. So. Any other, are there any other questions on Zoom with regards to traffic calming? I know this is, this is a big topic, so I don't know. I'm glad we're talking about it.
Uh, why not put speed humps on side streets where it is far more appropriate than on arterial streets like Greenfield and Hazelwood?
Well, so, um, I think the the oversold, I don't want to say it looks nice to put a speed hump. That that's one thing that Domi does ask is that, uh, rather than saying be a speed hump or be bollers or be this, just let them know that the cars are going to percolate through, whether it's, you know, through down my tree or through this intersection. And then they they come in with their expertise, their engineering expertise and traffic expertise, and make this decision about what would be the most effective solution for that space, right? Though, uh, you know, it's not for me to say, oh, a speed hump should go here or there. Um, I will say that in, you know, with in terms of Greenfield Avenue in particular, um, when you were going, first of all, there's the big heat exorcism, um, where you have kids going after school, they're going to the playground, they're going to the swimming pool, and, uh, the reality of that sector is Squirrel Hill. But just to answer the question, uh, you know, you have Merrick's Park by and then cross the street and it's, and cars are flying by. Uh, and they don't walk all, you know, because it's quite a far walk. The pool is full and your car following down is really far walk up to the intersection back and in and all of that. So people just cross the street. You have to, you have to put in the stage measures that work in the way that people are using the street, right? So that that is why some some type of traffic calming there because it's just so dangerous, traffic cars flying. And the city does have priorities from the way that they are prioritized, prioritizing for traffic calming is no longer just going to be sort of a squeaky wheel, which was mentioned earlier, like, oh, we want to first send the House letters until we get it. It's going to be more of like, well, that's the first areas where kids are walking through. That would be a higher, that would be a higher priority. Um, so, um, and in terms of community engagement, again, I I am a hundred percent sympathetic. I mean, this is something, working with slash against Domi on projects that are happening in my community is why I wanted this job in the first place. Uh, that, you know, it, you know, in the run, there was a Domi project and and something that we thought was secure. So I am enormously to the need for community engagement, the need to be heard. And one thing too, uh, that I feel has kind of gone by the wayside, I think with the pandemic and Zoom, is I don't know if you remember, but but pre-pandemic, uh, if you would go to a a Domi planning meeting about this project or that project, um, it would be sort of this, like, this was charrette style where you have maps laying out on the table and you can walk around and be like, oh, here, you know, this is actually what's happening, like, this is what it's like, and I'm giving you the, you know, one on one, the experience of using these areas as opposed to just sending in long emails and sort of a bullet list of all your recommendations, which is harder for Domi to consume, it's harder for people to write. So I really would love to see in these, in these larger scale projects, not every function, you know, not not every tiny one, but definitely these larger scale intersections, these type of meetings where people can say, hey, look, this is what's happening to me. Or like, you can, you can anecdotal stories for court, like, I was here and a bike was coming this way and we couldn't see them because of the hill or whatever, something that the Domi folks might not, might not know because they're not driving the street every day, right? They're not on the street every day. So, um, that's something that that I'm hoping, I'm hoping to bring back at least at least in part. So.
That's it. So maybe just get through the rest of your updates and then we can open it up for a moment.
Yeah, sure, of course. So.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Yeah. Speed humps in Detroit, Illinois, and I'm, I'm, I love it.
Mm-hmm.
Few, no warning. They just appear, knowing that that's just what we thought. One or two people may have complained about the traffic there. I walk along that area all the time. I never saw any of them. Maybe that was kind of wasn't there at night, for example, I don't walk at night. No one sent mail, sent email, knocked on the door or asked anyone's opinion. They just appeared.
Mm-hmm.
She lives right across the street from one. No warning.
I had a morning idea and the evening, I knew it was coming and I lived right there. Which, for nine.
And I was like, then it's, yeah, but I don't know.
Well, so.
What? Oh, there, well, yeah, they're the block away from me. I didn't see that.
Well, so.
They do that whole area.
Yeah, it is great though. So I I can speak through to what, because I wasn't involved in the, in the putting of the speed humps on the, but so I can't speak to what happened before. I thought that was pulled out before. But again, what I really can is that it it is very important to me that with these larger scale projects, you know, whether it's traffic calming entire quarter or not, I'm not saying it could be a public meeting for every something else. Someone put up like a bollers and small, you know, justice, that that has problems, but large scale corridor projects, yeah, absolutely. I really, I was forced to press Domi to have a, that's your mayor's office, as an entire department, yeah, dedicated specifically to justice kind of thing, right? To connecting with neighborhoods, making sure that we're getting the feedback, getting the feedback and also the outreach. And, uh, so that that is something I I I am committed to, so. I hope hopefully that uses your minds going forward.
No, not until there are Domi goes, speed humps.
That's the only thing that will.
Do you know about Engage Pittsburgh, you know, that that website? I think you can subscribe to that. It's cool. I can email someone, everyone, how about new project or in a city, not necessarily what I'm interested in. And Domi on the website, all these projects are there and you can comment on them if you're aware of them. They solicit information if you're, I guess, subscribed to it, you know, it's there.
If you have any idea that you're thinking of doing that.
Well, I should know it. I can give you an email. If anything, you do have, I don't get an email there.
So if, if you go, well, so if you go onto Engage Pittsburgh, better, thank you, because that's, that's, if you go onto Engage Pittsburgh, it's a subscription service, you, uh, you can go on the page and when you sign up, you click through your interests, right? So if I'm interested in a playground or I'm interested in a specific area of the city, right? You can click your interest and then you will get an email every time you do Engage Traffic Watch, uh, which is very helpful. I don't Engage, I mean, even as a silver, I'm on the Engage page and stuff. I'm aware of what they pop up.
You shouldn't have to be programmed like that. Maybe, maybe if they change, they should contact people who haven't even asked to be contacted because they're in the area, when you see area.
Well, so that is why my office is certainly requesting that folks sign up for our list so that we can indeed contact you with your thing, things that, that are going on in your, in your neighborhood or or whatnot, or the, the, the whole. So I do, uh, want to move on because I think we're getting, we're almost, yeah, we're almost on time. I want to take some other questions. Uh, I did want to talk a little bit about the Mon Open Connector budgets. Uh, so there was a project called the Mon Open Connector. There was a a road that was going to go through Shenley Park for shuttles between C M U, uh, and Pitt and the Hittin' Green. Uh, that project was canceled by the mayor. And so there is some budget left over from pieces of that project. Um, uh, I am in the process of, I'm working with Domi to find out which pieces of that budget needs to stay in order to, uh, provide an action. Their projects, right? So I don't want to disturb other things that they have happening now. Uh, that said, there are some things in that project that my feeling is are certainly have gone by the wayside for the near future. So those fun, uh, so now we can move, uh, money from that. One to, uh, uh, to make repairs to the rec center in Hazelwood that is hosting a large high school program for kids up in the upper Dinkland and Angel area. Uh, another is to, uh, build a new playground in the Thirty First Ward, uh, which, you know, is a, is an area that that has, does not always get as much attention as as it deserves. Um, but it's also part of the district. Uh, so I did want to let folks know about that. Uh, also going forward, uh, I'm looking at some sidewalk projects, uh, city sidewalks. I know, again, with Lenning, it's a walking down to Brownsville Road, the sidewalk just kind of ends. And it's very hard and very scary to walk down there yet. People do because that, the buzzing catch and the farming down there with all kinds of, of, of amenities down on Brownsville Road. So, um, that is, that's where the next phase of this that that we're going to be looking at to, to reality of those funds. Um, but I do want to invite that community because I know that this is important. Uh, I do still have things like the shoes, which if you're a bike user, you know exactly what I mean, trying to say the shoe. Um, I am, uh, I do want to work with Bike Pittsburgh and Domi to to make that section of Bike at the, Bike at less frustrating than it is, uh, but perhaps a simpler solution, the very, very long term one, that that is kind of what it works now. Um. Any questions about that? Sorry?
Can we talk about here?
Yes, yeah, I'm going to talk about here. That would have been, that would have been mine off here. Uh.
It seems to me that there may be a little link, the connection between Domi and Hazelwood and Green is vital. And what's the place in, um, which street is Green, is it?
Yeah, so, um, rather than put it in front of, it was currently a public park, um, that's, you know, that's the park where I live right next there. My kids would walk through that park all the time. Uh, I mean, again, this is outside of the purview of city council, so I don't want to, you know, I I can't do much more than just express what I think is important. But, um, I would like to see expanded public transportation between those two, those two sites. Uh, and, you know, in particular, there are some options of extending the seventy-five over the age of the fridge, or sorry, over the hot and fridge into Hazelwood. That would be a connection. We've already, for, for the council, but we worked very hard to get, um, for Pittsburgh, the public transit, to, uh, get the ninety-three running on the weekends. So now folks in Hazelwood have, uh, weekend service so we didn't have before. So, um, I'm a huge advocate for public transit. I do understand that that is a purview of the county, uh, that's sort of more larger scale things, perhaps for a meeting with the mayor. Um, but, uh, but that that would be my response to that is how do we connect those two important, um, important centers? Is we do, we do a better, a better public transportation. Um, so the deer, uh, I I don't have too much of an update except to say that the mayor's office is hugely aware of the deer situation. Uh, the Squirrel Hill Urban Coalition is also working on finding a solution to the deer situation. Um, and so while I can't give you an answer on what is happening now, I can say that folks are on it, right? We are looking at it. It is, it's critical. It's, it's all over. It's in my neighborhood. It's in your neighborhood. There are deer all over. Um, yeah. Maybe not as satisfactory an answer as you want, but it's the answer I can give now is that we are, we are all very aware of the deer situation and 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 looking to address it as quickly as possible. So, um, I think that, oh, I did want to talk a little bit, so we are working on some legislation. This is just getting, we're working. So Brooke, um, Brooke over here has done an amazing job so far. We are looking at some legislation to, um, to, uh, better protect our parks from development. Uh, right now, uh, public park, it's funny, you mentioned, you know, that strip of Shenley Park and that was, that was something that we learned, who had this Mon Open Connector, uh, situation was that folks were saying, well, that's not really Shenley Park. It's not part of of what Mary Shenley designated, right? For the, but even though it, even though it's a park, the soccer field, the bike trail, the big sign that says Shenley Park, I mean, it's it technically, right, is not categorized in in the city code as a park. And so, uh, we wanted to, uh, come up with legislation, which we are working on. It's not finished yet. But A, would would allow us to do that, to designate areas as parks, um, in sort of a public truck. And, uh, secondly, protect those parks from development, uh, that does not, that is not directly related to the enjoyment of those parks. They, they, the idea that the parks are for the people, they are not for building, you know, whatever, whatever. If 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 it's not for the enjoyment of the park, you know, they're not for building community. And this is a future building thing where we're talking about, for example, Hayes Woods, which is also in the district, very rugged and now starting to get some attention, uh, uh, Pittsburgh Cars Conservation Agency just, uh, uh, got two hundred and fifty thousand to, um, do some goat scape thing and whatnot everywhere in Hayes Woods. So that's very exciting. But what we don't want to see fifty years from now is that someone decides, oh, Hayes Wood, that'd be a nice place to, you know, there's, we'd like to build a road, you know, a a road between, you know, Lincoln Place and the South Side. Wouldn't that be, wouldn't that be convenient to just, you know, build it right through Hayes Woods? Well, we we don't want that to happen. So that's what we're trying to build instance legislation now so that, you know, future generations don't kind of have to have these arguments about what's part, what's not part. Um, and anyway, that will be coming. There will be more on that. But, um, I think it's, it's, it's looking very good, this legislation. I'm excited about it. Brooke has done an outstanding job. Um, so, you know, more and more on that to come. Um, I think now I just want to turn it over to any more questions. I did want to get the traffic calming there because I need to see some big ones. So now just general ones.
Hi, Councilwoman. Um, I'm quite young, so it's kind of interesting to be here for the first time. And, um, I just wanted to ask a question about Council President's proposal. The Council, uh, President's proposal for the curfew, um, I'm sure you're aware of it, um, that involved a lot of you. So it's something that got a lot of attention. The mayor's office did say that they weren't going to support it. Um, last night, I went, you know, Melvin, or Al, the community advisor.
Yeah, you're, you're, I'm sorry.
He's the, um, Melvin Al, the mayor's community advisor, I think, last, last night. He was telling me about that, how they weren't going to support it, the, the, there's one thing here.
Yeah, so, um, yeah, thanks, thanks for asking. That actually came up today at, um, at, um, the regular meeting with councils. So, um, one thing that I do want to, um, I, I, I believe, and her council president says she is wonderful, uh, and she's, um, and, uh, her intentions were very good, right? So she is, of course, looking at all, we've got lots of violence going on and, um, in, in, in various communities around the city. Uh, so I think she'd be looking for a way to, um, to address that. Um, that said, uh, these, uh, curfew, the, well, this curfew law that is on the books from the nineties, um, is, um, extremely punitive, punitive, and I don't, and I think the research has demonstrated clearly in other cities that curfews are not an effective way to, um, to mitigate the youth violence. Um, I know for myself, just in terms of, uh, sort of right to exist, right? I wouldn't want my kids subjected to walking down the street and somebody making a call and saying, hey, you know, there's, I mean, I don't, I don't even know what that call is, like, vicious looking young person, you know, those. So these, and, uh, and for creating interaction with young people in the police where they don't need to be acting. So, um, I I, and and I will say that at this stage, um, uh, Council President really just wants to have a committee just to talk about, uh, and I think one of the key things that she has been in are some kind of, um, picking space for kids to go voluntarily. And I think she is commendable, something that I would support. I mean, I don't know what it would look like, our school, the correct, or et cetera, but at this stage of the conversation, that after she did that, I'm not understanding, I didn't speak for her, but that is my interest, we have to feel that on this. Um, and, um, there's, and, uh, I, I do want to, want to underscore that, um, her intentions are really looking out for our kids as, as, and so both like you and me who sort of, you know, our eyes kind of popped open when we saw that, that, that curfew statement. So, um, yeah, that's. Okay. Any other? Any other questions?
Um as you know, the Inflation Reduction Act, which was passed this past fall, has a lot of money for uh both uh individual homeowners as well as the cities and counties and states to take advantage of to help with uh electrification or like something like vehicles. I was wondering, um one, what's the current status of the students' office of uh Roseland? And two, um you know, what's the, what can be done to help get the board out about all these great, like, uh refunds uh in the factory base? You think he will truly encourage them to make their homes much more energy efficient and to help with energy transition?
Yeah, sure. Thanks, but um that's very important. Uh I know, I I do know, I can't say specifically in terms of electrifying the heat, that is nothing that the city is thinking of. Uh part of it, I don't want to speak too much to specifics, I want to, you know, I want to go back and get that more closely. Um uh in terms of things like solar co-ops and whatnot, which we have seen at Hazelwood and was involved with this one, come on that build up very quickly. Um uh that's I to the extent that my office can and on the newsletter, we absolutely want to be promoting those kinds of programs as we're available. Uh so that if, you know, for the various organizations, if please communicate with us, you know, let us know about these things because you know, you can't know about all things. If there is a program available, let us know. We will do what we can to work with you and try to learn. That is something that, again, in all things, if you have something that you want to promote around the district, that is something we can help you with. You know, um so so please do reach out. And the bigger we can grow our email, the more, the more we get that good information now. Uh again, the home page is another great place. Uh she led Martinez, who um who um worked there. She's the one and the resource. Uh that goes out. That doesn't go squirrel down the south, but it does go Greenfield, because um so I thought it wasn't a comprehensive answer that you know for, but um but oops, sorry. Anyone else? Sorry? Oh, you do get them. Oh, perfect. Okay, great. I didn't realize that. Perfect. Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question. I want to know when you're going to get a handout with all the screens, the business and community business, and the people around you in the practice. That's what I was reading much about that. But every time I call them up, I get different answers about what is legal and what is not. And when I call the league, they're trying to get a statue. It was written, a law out here and everything I had to sign. Freedom of information. So I would really like to know what the city is doing about that. But I would like to express a campaign. And I would like to walk down the street, mind they and someone called me and they had to be, but I didn't give them a dollar.
Well, I know that the city uh is active at the moment of the um public safety is uh in the process of expanding its routes program, reaching out on the streets program, which is to address folks who are out, you know, who are living unhoused, um to create uh hubs where people can go, where they can get medical care. Um my personal belief is that it is uh uh I don't want to criminalize being, you know, being unhoused um or just, you know, just sort of it's on the street.
Well, you should look for it. I look at several of the people, but my really friend, most of them, a lot of them are not part of the local effort. At the end of the day, they have something picked along in their car. I've seen people get, you know, about money to them because they all wear the money and they do within a pool. And you're right, sir, that all these people are unhoused, it's something going through. I wonder what we're going to do for the citizens who are paying taxes, not just for the people who are on the street.
Well, I mean, I'm not, I'm not going to make a promise to you to to have handouts addressed on on my, I don't know, that's.
Where everybody is going to get rid of them.
Well, I I may, I
I'm hoping that they can go where they go with the rains, where there's coal, where they go for it. Where I'm, they go, they're raised, they all disappear and they all seem to have a great deal of ability to pay responsibility for four to nine five, they're dead.
Uh I would love to be able to get you that.
Yeah, I would appreciate it. I would appreciate it, but I don't want to that way. Business, and so again, they're suffering because of these people. I know now this people will.
So I mean, we've talked um so, yeah, I, and and, you know, and if there's a particular incident somewhere and it gives in touch with the office about this issue, it would be absolutely anyways, so, yeah.
If the police commander were here, he could tell you to call three one one if they're aggressive. They can't be aggressive. They want to double value. Also, they can, you can handle within the institute in the DPM or an outdoor restaurant.
Okay.
So if you see through here any of these places, they like to stand around the bank for a second, call three one one. I'm not.
They have a lot of, the local houses, everybody's using the different story, whether it be the standards that they go.
Police determine, like, please, no response. They don't respond. And sometimes I'll tell them, they answer, you have to come back aggressively to them and tell them you can't be, this can't be in the A P M.
Well, I would recognize the engaging. I would recognize, yeah, if 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 you feel that it's dangerous, absolutely call three one one. Um oh, but, yeah.
Any other? We have one from the Zoom. Oh, yeah, and it's a great way to also wrap up this time with very quickly. It's already seven thirty. We have the room until eight, so we can hang around until then. But uh somebody in Zoom asked, what is the best way to contact the council person? And as I mentioned, I'm going to be sending out an email to everybody who's up um with uh the office's agent as well as the person's information as well.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, so um you can call me, just call me, right? I mean, you can call me. I know it's you. If you call me, I say your number and I promise, when I phone the rain, so that I still I, if I can pick up, I pick up, right? If I can't pick up, I keep up. If I can't, just leave it, leave me a whistle and I will get access to it really as soon as I can. You know, and I do, I do get access. Uh or call the office if it's an urgent, you know, specific question or something like that. Talk to me in particular, or the moral of the pro, you know, they're lovely and one to talk to as well. Call the office, you can send an email. As I said, also feel free to, you know, contact me through Facebook, um and Twitter, I'm not as good about. Uh I I do, Next Word is also tricky. I don't check that one as much, I have to be honest. But but definitely Facebook, that's a good one. Uh you can send me a text. Uh really, I, the doors, that is, that is very important. I want everybody to know that. Um and, you know, we're not always peaking on on everything, right? But I'm always happy to talk to this group and um, you know, and just so you know, your, 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 your voice is heard. So thank you all so much for coming. This is, this is our first meeting. Really excited. Um and yeah, I brought some cookies, some water all the way out. And uh yeah, thank you. Feel free to sit around, guys, rip the eight.